All right, Tom, shall we? We waiting on Natalie?
Natalie's next.
Okay, oops. All right. If I could have your attention, please? Thank you. We'll call the City Council Committee of the Whole of May 22nd, 2023 to order. If the clerk will help me with the roll call, please.
Albertini?
Here.
Burton?
Here.
Flurry?
Here.
Frank?
Here.
Freeman?
Here.
McGee?
Here.
Mahal? Mahal's absent. Porter?
Here.
Prather?
Here.
Snow?
Here.
Nine present?
Tell you what, let's do something a little bit different here. Let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, how about that? I pledge allegiance-
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, under public comment, do we have anybody registered?
No, we do not.
We don't, I did want to make a comment real quick. We had a swearing in today of firefighter Jason Jankowski, and it was just about as packed as it is now. And firefighter Jankowski comes to us with 14 years of experience, and we're fortunate to have him. He pretty much, pretty much hits the ground running, and I want to congratulate him and welcome him and his family to the city of Belvidere. I also want to thank alderwoman Frank and alderman Albertini for being here today this morning, thank you very much. I don't think I missed anybody else. And then I, before we go forward, I do have a reminder that we are going to have veterans' Memorial Day activities next Monday, May 29th, at 10:00 a.m. at the VFW located at 1310 West Lincoln Avenue at 10:00 a.m. And we traditionally do that, hopefully the weather will be good and we can be outside. But just as a reminder, the 29th, next Monday at 10:00 a.m. at the VFW. And also, tonight is our alderwoman Prather, Cheryl Prather, it's her last meeting, and I do want to thank her and recognize her. She's put two years in here, last two years, but I think more instrumental is that we had had trouble in the neighborhood over in her ward, and I won't say exactly where, but I do remember it. And I do remember, remember alderwoman Prather was instrumental in helping to organize the residents over there, and making sure that Chief Woody and myself were paying attention to what was going on, and we were well aware of it, and I think we had a successful outcome. But without it, without alderwoman Prather, I know that that would have been much, much more difficult, and I thank you for your time, your service, and for that as well. And I guess it's an awkward, I never, I always hated this, but if you wanted to say anything, alderwoman Prather, feel free, the microphone is yours, so please do.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say it's been a pleasure and a privilege to be able to serve these last two years. I appreciate the confidence of all the voters who voted me into this office. It's been extremely educational and rewarding of an experience, and I will miss quite a few of you, not all of you, but quite a few, no. No, honestly, it has been a pleasure, and I will miss all of you. Thank you.
Well, thank you, and I, you know, I think the contribution that you had made was with, you know, we had gang activity that was really out of hand in that area, and you would, it's hard to get, sometimes people fear, they have fear, but the only thing that we can do is stand up to that, and I think you motivated people to do that, and I was proud to be a part of it. And I want to thank Chief Woody as well in the department, because without you, without them, that would probably still be going on. So thank you again, and congratulations to you, and I wish you well in the future, and if there's anything you need, feel free to call me.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, under public forum, we have none. Reports of officers, boards, and special committees. We have item A, tornado response recognition. Chief Shadle?
Mayor, with your and council permission, due to a lot of the first responders just finishing up with the parade, can we move that to other in the agenda?
Sure.
Which is just, we'll give our quick department updates, and by that time, they should be all cleared up and available in here, if that's okay.
Okay, we will do that, thank you. We have item B, EMS proclamation, EMS Week proclamation. You want to, you want to wait with that, chief, as well? The proclamation itself?
Yeah, we'll talk about the proclamation.
Okay. Under public safety, unfinished business, we have none, public safety, new business, police department update, Chief Woody?
Thank you, Mayor. Probation, probationary officer Ochoan Venegas is in week three at Suburban Law Enforcement Academy. Probationary officer Bendel is in week two at Police Training Institute. We did have an officer resign this last week, which puts our department down two officers. We will begin testing for entry-level officers on June 24th. Our department is currently on the waiting list, number one, with the Police Training Institute, two spots in September. Officer, Officer Corn will be graduating from the K-9 training on May 26th, then rotate back to B-rotation. Sergeant Washburn and Deary shift from noon to midnight on May 29th. Vets' roll will be coming back into town this Wednesday, the 24th. They should be rolling back about 8:45 p.m. is what they're shooting for. Our department, as well as event organizers, Boone County Sheriff's Department, Belvidere Fire District 2 and 3, and the Illinois State Police will be escorting them from the I-90 off-ramp to the fairgrounds. They'll spend about 15 minutes there. I did put some literature on your desks for your review, and then they'll be escorted north to Winnebago County line, and then state police will take over from there. And then last, state of Illinois will be recognizing Officer Joe McDermott and Ryan Davenport on May 31st for the Medal of Honor for March 2017 River Rescue. For those that may not remember, a woman had driven into the Kishawaki River in Belvidere Park with her young child in the vehicle. Officer McDermott and Davenport rescued both her and the child that day, that night, and they will be recognized for that just about six years later, so we're proud to see that. That's all I had, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief Woody. And we have fire department update, Chief Shadle?
Thank you, Your Honor. Thank you all for coming to the fire department update and police update. We'll make it, I'll make it shorter than normal, I promise.
We'll see.
We'll see. Last, in the last 30 days, the fire department responded to 294 calls for service, averaging about 9.8 per day. I'll skip all the way down to, on May 1st, we started transporting patients. Since May 1st, we've transported 95 patients to the hospitals. We've been providing excellent service, and it's very fitting that we're doing the, it's EMS Week, EMS proclamation, also recognizing the response that saved so many lives with the police first responders and EMS workers this week. Mayor, you already touched on Jason Jankowski, so thank you for that. New engine is slightly delayed, it's being put back in engineering, there's one of the water pipes that was touching the steering linkage, and they're taking care of it and doing it the right way, so they're sending it back through engineering. It should not hopefully take too much longer, maybe a couple weeks to do that. So a new engine here in a couple weeks. The inspector, I'm going to wait probably one more week to see how many applications. Right now, there's 20 applications for the new inspector, so that's promising. So we're just finishing up, still working through to getting all the connections between our EPCR billing, our CAD, Medicare, Medicaid, and IDPH. Shannon and I have been crews, have been working on that. Like to remind you of the promotions on June 5th of Thornton and Swanson. Jason Swanson's getting promoted to captain, and Nick Thornton is going to be promoted to lieutenant, and that will be June 5th at 10:00 a.m. at City Hall, and that concludes my update, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Shadle. Moving along, Chief Woody, I know you have some recognition for valor awards, would you want to come forward here?
Yeah, if it's okay with you.
Would you want to wait?
I would like to present them about the same time as the fire department.
Sure.
Thank you.
Item 3, finance and personnel, unfinished business, we have none. Item 4, finance and personnel, new business, finance department update, update, finance department update, Ms. Hanson?
Thank you, Mayor, three quick updates. We continue to provide documentation and information to Sikich as part of the city's year-end audit, and to Lauterbach on behalf of the police and fire pension funds. Sikich was onsite May 10th to begin their preliminary fieldwork, and will return for two weeks in June for their final fieldwork. As Chief Shadle mentioned, we continue to meet weekly with EMSMC, the city's ambulance services billing company, and are currently in the process of creating the many necessary accounts to receive Medicare and Medicaid and private insurance payments, providing the city and the billing company personnel with access to information and records, and reviewing form invoices and statements as we move towards final drafts. And then finally, as you know, the city's reserve funds are invested in a number of CDs of varying value and duration with local banking institutions. The current investment policy has not been updated since July 20th, 2010, and contains an attachment A listing authorized financial institutions, many of which are no longer, no longer exist due to buyouts or mergers. Therefore, we plan to bring to a future committee of the whole meeting, a revised policy for your review and consideration.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Hanson. Any questions for Ms. Hanson? All right, hearing none, we'll move along here. Item 5, other, we have A, Enterprise Zone Benefit Levels Amendment. We have tonight, well, could I get a motion, first of all, to approve? Motion by alderwoman Prather, second by alderman Flurry. And so, the enterprise zone had a, we had made an enhancement, or suggested we make an enhancement for the taxing districts in order to compete for businesses. We want jobs, we want opportunity here in the city of Belvidere, and we, we do want commercial or light industrial, industrial opportunities, and in order to have them, we thought this would be a better way to compete. Traditionally, the abatement, there's been a property tax abatement in the enterprise zone, it has been 80, 60, 40, 20 in each year, first year through the fourth year, and we thought that it was probably advantageous because of some of the larger businesses that have decided to locate here, if we would change that and make a mid-level and a high level, and then keep what we currently have for the smaller investment. But I guess, the city attorney, do you have anything to add to that?
That's pretty succinct, as you know, this was, we talked to each of you about this once before. It was brought to our attention through the project Yukon, hopeful investment that we see in the near future. The, to reach a mid-level property tax abatement schedule, it requires at least $250 million in new investment, so it's not small, at least 150 new jobs. If they do meet that, meet that level, they would get an abatement 100% of the property tax in the first year, 90% in the second year, 80% in the third year, 60 in the fourth year, and 50 in the fifth year. The high-level property tax abatement schedule, which was designed for a project Yukon, requires $800 million in new investments, so there will not be very many of these, and at least 400 new jobs. In that scenario, they'd receive an 85% reduction of the property taxes for five years, and a 50% reduction in the last five years. To have this go forward, the city council must approve it, the county board must approve it, as well as the village boards of Capron and Popular Grove, and then set down the state for their approval. So this is just the first step in getting the whole thing approved.
Thank you. Questions, alderman Snow?
So how does this work with the employment accountability as far as longevity, or do they just get the break, once they reach that end of the year, their whole cycle, they got, in this case, in the mid-level, they've got five years, and then the other one, they've got 10 years? By that 10-year point, they reach that goal?
No, they have to reach, they have to make that goal within the first two years of, it was a two or three, three years of operations, and then they have to certify and maintain that thereafter through the entire term of the abatement by sending in personnel records to the zone administrator for verification.
Go ahead.
And what happens if they don't meet that requirement?
They lose them.
They lose the abatement.
They lose them.
They lose the incentive going forward.
Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So concerning Project Yukon, are, with these new tax level abatement incentives, along with the reduction of permit fees, which they didn't ask for in the first place, will that catapult us in the running above our competitor for them?
We believe so, yes.
Okay, so that was, that was major in this. The other question I had was, anybody that has a dog in the Stellantis race knows that they're fighting with Windsor right now over the VW deal, and realizing that they could have gotten a better deal between the American Inflation Reduction Act and our governor's incentives to remain in the U.S. They've halted their construction at their Windsor battery plant, so if they, you know, light bulb goes off and they decide to utilize the Belvidere plant for a battery plant, would these pertain to them? Because it's for, not, it can't be, it has to be for new employees, not replacement employees?
It does, and we'd have to cross that bridge when they came back. I doubt they'd be using the existing plant for a battery plant, so obviously if they're creating a new plant to do that, it would apply. But we'd have to cross that bridge when they came to it and talk to them about it. And to you, frankly.
And just to be accurate, so the Ontario, it's my understanding that the reason Stellantis put the brakes on the Ontario project was because they felt that their federal government was not living up to their promises that they made for grants and for investment, and, but technically, I think, you know, I've always, I have always felt that the deepest pocket was the federal government to be able to court or to entice economic development here. It sounds like there, they've got a problem, I assume, from what I've heard, it's going to be temporary. I don't think that's going to be permanent, but I think it does put an emphasis on whatever the grants or whatever the closing fund that would be used to entice, whatever would be used to entice them to locate here, to reopen here, I hope, and any other investment. In answer to your question, that's correct, any, any investment here, any new investment would qualify for this, so I'm hopeful, optimistic, thank you. So, we have a motion in a second, is there any other questions? Hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor then to approve the Enterprise Zone Benefit Levels Amendment. Zone Benefit Levels Amendment, will when their name is called, answer aye. Any opposed, nay, as the clerk calls a roll, please.
Elvertini?
Aye!
Brereton?
Aye.
Flurry?
Aye.
Frank?
Aye.
Freeman?
Aye.
McGee?
Aye.
Porter?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Snow?
Aye.
Nine in favor?
Motion passed, thank you. And item B, under Public Works, our wastewater treatment plant, primary electric service replacement, in your packet is some information regarding that, and so Brent, would you want to comment on that?
Thank you Your Honor, as the mayor said, memo in your packet, our conduit bank, our primary electrical service at the wastewater treatment plant, has been compromised and needs to be replaced. We received a proposal from Williams Brothers Construction in the amount of $115,520.58 to complete this work. The new service bank will be relocated along the existing foundation of the main equipment building. We will complete the excavation work required for the new service, and the IEP has agreed to include this work as a change order to our existing loan project, which is good because as part of the loan project includes principal forgiveness, so part of this cost will be written off basically by the state as part of that grant program, which is why we got the proposal from Williams Brothers in order to qualify for that provision. I would recommend approval of the proposal from Williams Brothers Construction in the amount of $115,520.58 to complete the installation of the new primary electrical service and duct work for the wastewater treatment plant. This work will be included in a change order for the 2018 WWTP improvement project and paid for as part of the IEP loan for this project.
Okay, could I get a motion of that effect? Motion by Alderman Snow, second by Alderman Porter, is there any questions? Alderman Snow?
So, if I gather based on your statement, the Williams Brothers already has the contract to do the project in the first place, and that's why we're using them to finish it off this portion, as opposed to going out to bid?
Correct, and in order to include it as part of the IEP loan project, we had to go through the current contractor, it wasn't in the original scope of the improvements we were doing, but it was discovered during work associated with that, their original contract when this was discovered.
Alderman Freeman?
Thank you again Mayor, so Brent, do you know how much more our loan payment will be once we add this on?
Not sure, because I don't know how, we have, we don't know the final, the amount of write-off that we're going to get from the state, we won't know that until we certify the completion of the project. So, I mean, you know, worst case here, $115,000, you know, it's going to be probably about a 10, 11 cent increase if you were to just cover that cost for that lump sum amount, but again, don't know how much IEP is going to write off initially, so. Council will find that out when we come back as part of the loan project closeout and the loan agreement with the state, I'll be, report back to you guys and let you know what that final amount's going to be.
Okay, is there any other questions regarding the motion on the floor? All right, hearing none, all those in favor of the motion on the floor, actually, will say aye?
Aye.
Aye, if there's any opposed? Okay, motion passed, thank you, and we will go ahead and go back on the agenda here to item A. Chief Woody, did you want to go first?
Please.
Thank you.
So this evening, we are going to be, the fire chief and myself are going to be recognizing both police and fire and EMS for the response to the tornado on March 31st. Before we do that, I'm going to ask the mayor if he could go ahead and queue up the body cam footage that we selected for your viewing. I went through hours of body cam footage, and this is just one officer's body cam, but it is probably one of the best representations of what police and fire, as well as the citizens did that night to save human lives.
You're okay my man, you're okay. Let's work on his legs.
Can you hear it?
Get those off. Okay, here, right here. Okay, we gotta get this off of his legs.
Yeah, I know, it's right here, he's about a foot and a half in.
Okay. Hey, is somebody moving? He stopped, he stopped. Yeah, here, what do you need my man? Okay. Here, let's, sorry about that, here, hold, sorry, step out? Let me get over here. You got it? Yeah. Roll up, roll up. There you go, pull your leg out, pull your leg out. There you go, here, come on, move it out, you're good. Hey, my man. There we go. Hey, hey, you, take him. Yeah, hey, hey, I'm gonna, you take it, does he have neck? Is his neck hurt or his head hurt?
I think it's his legs.
Just his legs?
It's his legs.
Okay, hey, he might, hey, don't move him, because he looks like he has a head injury, all right? Hey, we got a head injury right here. Hey, 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 Joe, Joe, hey, McDermott, have you started calling in people?
Move out, just call me, I'm gonna call the ECR. Everybody here, we gotta, look right here, hold on, move stop.
Here, hey.
Is there anybody under you?
Let's use some leverage. Hey, can you get it in? Anyone there? Yeah, yeah, hey, he's right here. Come on, go. Roll forward. You can't hold this guy, get him, get him out, get him out, hurry up, hurry up, hurry up. There's people in there, there's one over there. There's one in the middle too. Hey, excuse me my man. Let's get him in there. There you go, you got it. There's another one, hey, there's another one. We got you, we're here. Come on, help her out, help her out, come on. Trying to hold it, watch your back, we got another one. Hey, you got it, you got it. Hey, hey, don't move. Hey, there you go, you're good. All right, all right. Here, pull this wood, start stacking wood, start clearing wood. There's someone deeper in. There's someone deeper in. We see you, we see you. Let's just kind of keep it up, say something. Start clearing wood. Grab us, grab us. This is good, we gotta move it. You gotta take another one right here. Yep, there's several on there, let's go. They can't move yet. We're coming for you. Keep getting free out. We're coming for you. Watch out, watch out, Brett, Brett, go. One second, one second, man. We're coming for you. Deep breathing, hey, slow deep breath. Take this from the top. Somebody take this. Hold it right there. There you go. We're coming for you, deep breath. Hey, there's someone else right there. There's someone else. We got you, we got you. We got you. Hey, there's a person right there, careful. And they're not responding. We're coming for you, we're coming for you, hey, we're coming for you, we're coming for you. We're right here, we're right here, we're right here. We're right here, one right here, we're right here, right here. There you go. We're right here, we're right here. Here, get that shit off of there Chris, yeah, we gotta take that. One sec, there you go, you got him, you got him. Is anyone else? Get out, get out, get out. Do we got any under there? From the opposite side. We're pinned in from the other side, we're clear. All right, get out, get out. All right, everybody out. One second, let's see. Keep moving. Hey, be quiet, let him walk. Hey, everybody quiet. Police or fire, be quiet. Hey, is there anyone else in here? All right, hold it, just hold it, quit pushing, just hold. Hold, hold, keep moving. Keep it quiet, good job. Keep moving the three. We can hold, let's keep moving. Everyone hold it, hold it, everyone else, get moving, get ready, start moving. Hey, Wiley, move up a little, I'm gonna move that to three, here, you move up that way. Hey, take this cord out guys, take it out. Hey, we need you to stop, we're here, go out of here, we need you to stop. Let's go this way with it, coming towards you. Fire department, call out. Get that plywood out of here guys. Hey, hey, you, help him. Help him, he's been here for a while. There we go. Yeah, all right. Hey, let's keep moving, I'm gonna keep throwing piles. You guys got this? Here, move in, okay, hey, you switch in with him, you switch out, hey, you.
So even though that was one officer's perspective, all of the body cam that I watched was very similar, and it was a collective effort between police, fire, and the community, and you take any one of those out of the equation, and we probably don't have the same success as we did that night. And in an attempt, the fire chief and I wanted to make sure that we recognized everybody that was responsible for those valiant efforts, and in doing so, we reached out to some of the concert goers that were there. Do we have Daniel Bansov in the audience by chance? Okay. I spoke to some of them that helped us that night, and a lot of them are still struggling with what happened, but make no mistake, this was a collective effort, and we all worked together to, to save those lives that you saw being pulled from the brick and the rafters, the roof, the debris, and no one group had any larger part to play than the other. When the time came, everybody just jumped in and did what needed to be done. So with that being said, I will move on to the presentation for the officers. With a brief explanation of what occurred that night. On Friday, March 31st, 2023, at approximately 7:47 PM, Belvidere City Police Officers were dispatched to 104 North State Street, the Apollo Theater, for a report of the roof collapsing and people being trapped inside. Belvidere officers, Boone County deputies, Belvidere Fire Department, and EMS responded to what was later determined to be an EF1 tornado that hit the 100 block in North State Street. The incident was later categorized as a mass casualty incident and declared natural disaster. On arrival, there were hundreds of people both inside and outside of the Apollo Theater. There was debris and pieces of the roof blown onto North State Street, making medical response challenging. Officers McDermott, Wiley, Danielak, Ellingson, Garcia, Rackley, and Reese witnessed numerous people suffering from various injuries and pleading for help. Officers were directed to the inside of the Apollo for a report of people trapped under the collapsed roof and brick exterior. Officers made their way inside and immediately began conducting a search and rescue, along with other first responders and people attending the concert. It was a collective effort of first responders and patrons to pull several people out from underneath the collapsed roof and a couple of feet of rubble and debris. Despite the risk to their own safety, they entered a building that had just partially collapsed to search for anyone who could have been trapped, injured, or in need of help. On this night, each of these officers answered the call of duty which saved lives. These officers don't respond to tragedy for notoriety, accolades, or awards, they do it because each of them has signed up to serve our city, understanding that their service could cost the ultimate price. I know none of these gentlemen considered themselves heroes, but I guarantee you that everybody that just watched that video does. They have bestowed honor onto themselves, our department, and our city. Officer Joe Danielak? Officer Danielak, due to your selfless bravery, courage, and devotion of duty at the risk of your own safety, I am honored to present you with the Valor Service Award. Officer David Ellingson? Officer Ellingson, due to your selfless bravery, courage, and devotion of duty at the risk of your own safety, I am honored to present you with the Valor Service Award. Officer Garcia, due to your selfless bravery, courage, and devotion of duty at the risk of your own safety, I am honored to present you with the Valor Service Award. Joe McDermott? Officer McDermott, due to your selfless bravery, courage, devotion of duty at the risk of your own safety, I am honored to present you with the Valor Service Award. Officer Rackley, due to your selfless bravery, courage, and devotion of duty at the risk of your own safety, I am honored to present you with the Valor Service Award. Officer Zach Reese? Officer Zach Reese. Officer Reese, due to your selfless bravery, courage, and devotion of duty at the risk of your own safety, I am honored to present you with the Valor Service Award. Officer Wiley. Officer Wiley, due to your selfless bravery, courage, and devotion of duty at the risk of your own safety, I am honored to present you with the Valor Service Award. Thank you all for coming tonight, and I know the fire chief has plenty to recognize as well. I can't tell you how proud I am of these officers. You hear about what happened, and you can picture it in your mind. But until you watch it and see it for yourself, you just can't necessarily understand the extent of what these officers do, not just this night, but every night. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Chief Woody. I do know that originally, Chief had called me shortly after he arrived on scene, and I had asked him, what was the situation? And he told me then, not good. And I said, well, how bad? And he said, real bad. And of course, I had just seen this video today, and so I realized how fortunate we were. And I think the chief sums it up rather well. Without our first responders there and without our ability to treat, triage, transport, individuals, rescue them, certainly, we would have had a lot more losses. So I want to thank all of our officers for that. Chief Woody, I want to thank you as well. And Chief Shadle?
Oh, just shut it off. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Council. I appreciate the opportunity, just like with Chief Woody, to recognize the individuals and just echoing what you said. These guys just would rather go in, do their work, and would not consider themselves to be heroes at all. They just show up, and if you asked any of them, would you like to come up to a meeting today? And they would say, no, no, they won't. But the truth is, is that they deserve recognition because they are heroes. They've dedicated their lives to serving others, to putting others first, to train on a continual basis for positive outcomes. And based on what we were handed that night, the outcome was positive. There was 48 people hospitalized, treated at the hospitals with injuries. There was 26 transported by ambulance. There was 11 that were red. What that means is probably those patients would have died without surgery from a surgeon within one hour to control bleeding or figure out what was wrong. And extremely proud to say that within two weeks, all of them were out of the hospital. And I'm not gonna discount physical therapy and working through their injuries and say that they don't have a long road ahead because there's a handful that do. But I just wanted to take a second and recognize the people that were there and the people that made a big difference. We really didn't know that building was safe until 12:30 the next day when structural engineers came. And the very first contractor met me out there at 7:00 in the morning, the next morning, and his first impression is like, no, there's nothing. We're gonna have to knock this building down. And I'm like, well, let's go around. And there's kind of a safe area, let's take a peek in. And they took a peek, and he saw the major structure was still there. And he said, you know what, this is repairable. This is, this structure is okay. None of those officers knew that. None of these guys knew that. So I'm recognizing, I'm gonna tell just a little bit about each role that they played. The first five firefighters that I'm going to recognize were the first five on scene that were there, that had hands on people, they were moving debris. We saw one officer's perspective. That was happening in multiple spots. There was no less than 10 people removed from that rubble that night. And by God's grace, no one else had passed. There was one individual, unfortunately, and he didn't make it. But there was absolutely nothing that anybody could have done for him. But everybody that could have had a chance, did get a chance. And it's because of the police and the fire and the EMS responders that really did a great job that night. They really, really did well, they are heroes. These first five, I'm gonna be awarding them with the Medal of Valor. And I'll just read the first one, and then I'll announce each one. But the Medal of Valor... So Medal of Valor presented to the individual for the roof collapse, incident number 23716, March 31st, 2023, at 1947 hours, for performing acts of heroism that clearly demonstrated courage, professionalism, and dedication in the face of grave danger, thereby saving multiple lives. So the very first recipient of this award is Lieutenant Travis Tangi. Travis was the initial interior commander, and as you saw, that was him in the video underneath of the rubble. He was also hands-on, all hands-on deck. You know, there's seven of us on duty. There was eight that day because we hired back based on the storm warning, one that allowed us three vehicles. You know, we were hoping we were gonna be babysitting some power lines like we normally do with strong winds, but that was not the case. But the area had prepared, the emergency plans were activated. They were already formed years before and practiced, and that's why there was a successful outcome. Next, I would like to award Matt Loudenbeck the Medal of Valor. Alright, I would also like to award firefighter Greg Pavlatos with the Medal of Valor. As long as these awards are in the right order, they'll be... I should open them, I'll open the rest of them. Alright, also on duty that night, responding immediately, was Adrian Trujillo. I'd like to award you with the Medal of Valor. And last, but certainly not least, with the Medal of Valor, I would like to award Zach Bullard. You saw Zach in that video as well. He was one of the first firefighters that you saw bearing, taking rubble out, so... Alright, the next set of awards I'd like to give are the Matorious Conduct Award. This is presented to those individuals for providing exemplary service to others, demonstrating professionalism and dedication to our community and to the fire service, thereby contributing to the saving of multiple lives. Lieutenant Drawl, will you come up here? Lieutenant Drawl was the shift commander that day. So what happens 25% of the time is the lieutenant acts up as our captain, which is the shift commander, which is responsible for organizing the incident. Now, Dan has been a lieutenant and a shift commander for a little bit of time, but this was his first incident that he ran command. And I will tell you that he did an exceptional job. Within four minutes, he assessed the situation, he requested 20 ambulances, and requested the TRT team, and set up a secondary triage center at the fire station. Within four minutes, I couldn't be more proud of Dan and his efforts. Alright, so these are in order of seniority. The next award is for Matorious Conduct, firefighter Mark Beck. So Mark was on duty that day, and he was tasked with getting everybody out of the basement. They did stop playing music because of the storm. They did recommend sending people to the basement. And there was one injured in the basement that Mark had assisted with as well. I'm not sure if they were injured and went downstairs. There was one part where the bricks actually collapsed through the floor as well and in the basement. So we're not sure about that. But Mark was sent down there, assisted that gentleman, and made sure that everybody evacuated that building down there. So thank you, Mark. Firefighter Jim Krebs. So firefighter Krebs, we were fortunate to have on duty that night. We have a few individuals that are specially trained in certain events. We have dive rescue divers, we have trench techs, we have hazmat techs, and we also have structural collapse technicians. So that is above and beyond all those certifications. And then you take the ops level, and then the specialist level. So that night, Jim was our technical rescue expert. He is the coordinator of our technical rescue team, and he was on duty that night. So his role that night was, he was also the engineer, so he had to get all the tools because that's part of the engineer's job. But he was also looking at the building, watching it, making sure that the walls are not moving or anything's changing for that structure to continue, to allow for a continued operation. Had those walls been shifting or crumbling, Jim would have seen it and just ordered everybody out. And luckily, that was not the case, and we were able to get everybody out. But Jim, I thank you for your service that night. Alright, next is Nick Thornton. We have to go in this order because that's the order there. So Nick Thornton is our emergency response planner for the department. That night, he had, I didn't know this, but I found out later, he had contacted shift commander Drawl and said, hey, I'm going to respond from home because I know we have extra weather, but I'm gonna make myself available. So Nick had informed me that he actually got there before station two. So he responded from home and was in that building the entire day. Being familiar with command, him and Travis were going back and forth with organizing the efforts inside and just played a multiple different roles that night, but was inside of that building from start to finish. So Nick, thank you for your service. Dr. Smetana.
Normally, I don't take it upon ourselves to honor people outside of our organization, but there's something that we have here in Boone County that you may or may not know. So we have an emergency medical doctor that is in a vehicle equipped with equipment even beyond the paramedic level. There's blood, whole blood on that. There's, you could perform an on-scene amputation, there's ultrasound. There's ultrasound, there's many other tools that an emergency physician has. And Mercy Hospital provides this service to our area at no cost. So alls we have to do is call dispatch and say, I would like MD-1 to the scene. And one of the other calls Lieutenant Drawl made within that four minutes was MD-1. You probably heard the call, and we're coming either way. But, so there's two emergency doctors, and they alternate. So they're always on duty, and they're able to respond. Sometimes they respond and get in the ambulance and leave their vehicle there, that's usually the mode of operation. So Dr. Smetana arrived that night, and you can imagine with 48 injured patients, he had to get, we collectively had to get the patients with the most serious injuries to the Level 1 trauma centers. So we had, it's called an EMS branch, but we had an EMS branch and an assistant, and they were all working together, getting information from the hospital. And Dr. Smetana was getting information from the hospitals as a liaison. And one thing that you don't want to do in triage is move the whole emergency. You know, if you have 20 patients here and you put them all on one hospital, that's already probably got a full waiting room, it's probably already full, right? That you've just moved the emergency. What happened that night was something very, very strategic and very different. Dr. Smetana wasn't the only one, but he played a major, major part in the communications. And I can tell you that they got it right because within two weeks, all those people were out of the hospital. There were two patients with severe open skull fractures, many broken necks, many broken backs, many multiple system traumas. And those patients got to open surgery rooms that were, had doctors and surgeons waiting. And if it was not that coordinator, and if it wasn't for your skilled assessment and helping with that, then they would have not have gotten there. And we don't have all the numbers and the relationships with all the hospital personnel. Dr. Smetana does. So he was calling, and they knew it was him, they knew he was on scene. So they're feeding him information back and forth in real time. Also helped with reunification and... I skipped ahead, I'm sorry, Adam and Brad. But this is, they're all, these are... So helping with all that, and like I said, they did, they got it right. Lauren, why don't you come up too? Because Lauren was also heavily involved in the triaging of all these patients. So Dr. Smetana and Lauren worked. Lauren, when I got on scene, a couple minutes right after Dan, I got out of the corner of my eye, I already saw Lauren there, and I knew she was triaging people. And her and Dr. Smetana worked together to get those patients to the right places. At the time, Lauren worked for Lifeline Elite. And I'm also proud to say that she's been permanently assigned to our department as one of our medics as well. So we're happy, happy for that. So I went out of order. So Dr. Smetana, for demonstrating extreme professionalism, skill, and utmost care for others by performing lifesaving actions, thereby saving multiple lives, I present you with this award and also a Belvidere Fire Department challenge coin. Thank you for your service. And also Lauren Schultz with the same award. I save the best for last. Adam and Brad, come on down. Adam and Brad, come on down. So one major part of that incident that assisted with saving lives and treating patients that were the, what we called the walking wounded, Lieutenant Drawl instructed everybody that could walk, walk down to the fire station. Well, luckily for them at our fire station, we have an EMS supply closet, which has all of our EMS supplies, more than, more than we need to restock our, our engines and trucks and everything. So we had everything there. So that was a great decision by Lieutenant Drawl. Some of the people that went to the station were, were pretty injured. There was, it was amazing that they, some, did someone get carried? So one person even got carried, excuse me, got carried to the station. So Adam and Brad both responded from home and took it upon themselves to set up the secondary triage center. So they ran the operations inside of the station, which was, of course, triage and transport, but it became also the area for reunification for all the family members, because you can imagine 260 people, they see on the news what happened, what do you think all the loved ones and families and friends do? They come, they call, and we had that all set up. And so a lot of people reunited at the station there. And Adam and Brad, there was, there was many other people at that station, but Adam and Brad really coordinated everything there at that station. So I would like to award you guys the meritorious conduct award. Again, for providing exemplary service to others, demonstrating professionalism, professionalism and dedication to our community and the fire service, thereby contributing to the saving of multiple lives. Thank you, Adam. And then I would like to award Brad Heiser with the same award. Thank you, all you, all you guys for coming tonight. You all look very, very sharp. I do have one more challenge coin I'd like to give. And so that night, after everything was all said and done, we still had a state street that was not secure. We had people wanting to come into the building. Chief Woody stayed through the night, worked with me, but I called the mayor, because I knew we were going to have to get some contractors, and I knew we were going to have to get some fencing, and I knew that stuff, I didn't want it to come out of my budget. And I didn't want it to be like station maintenance like last year. So, but all kidding aside, Mayor Morris answered the call, 2:00 AM, he answered it at 4:00 AM. And Mayor, I'd like to give you a challenge coin from our department. Thank you, friends and family members, for coming to show your support. I appreciate that. We're waiting for the parade to finish up, so everybody could get here, so, but you did get to catch some of the council meeting and see them in action, so. Sure that. Before I finish, Mayor, I just want to also recognize that there were 13, 13 fire department members that responded from home. There's only, there's 27, and I'm 28, so if you add eight and 13, and three people were out of state that night, almost everybody just stopped what they were doing and came in. And those who came in were Adam Elwinger, Joe Herber, Bobby Gunstein, Brad Heiser, Ron Herman, Chris Laterno, Stefan Mead, Corey Mitchell, Aaron Peel, Jason Swanson, Nick Thornton, Troy Vandenberg, and Todd Winnie. So I know a couple of you are here. Thank you, guys, for coming in. There was also 26 agencies that assisted with that response. Of course, Belvidere Police, Belvidere Public Works, Black Hawk Fire, Boone County Dispatch, Boone County Sheriff's, Capron Rescue Squad, Cherry Valley Fire, COMED, Boone County Fire District One, Boone County Fire District Two, Boone County Fire District Three, the Emergency Management Agency, Genoa Kingston Fire, Harlem Roscoe Fire, Lifeline Elite, Loves Park Fire, Maringo Fire, MedCom, Mercy Health MD One, NICOR, North Park Fire, Northwest Fire, Northwest Rescue, Rockford Fire, Rockford Fire Dispatch, and Rockford Fire. So I just thank all those agencies for their assistance to our community, and I'm just thankful for MABUS. A lot of people self-dispatched normally, not a good idea in that situation. It, it was desperately needed. It took a little while to get all the resources there. So, for example, Loves Park, and the chief didn't have, he's called my personal phone, which my wife answered, and he said, do you need ambulances? And she said, yep, I'm sure he does. Send them. So I should put Angela Shadle on here as well, but, because she got us two ambulances and an engine from Loves Park, so. So, thank you all.
So it is not by happenstance, and it wasn't by accident, that we had individuals that had their lives saved. We had individuals that probably saved their quality of life. And the chief, Chief Woody and Chief Shadle both recognized, I believe, all of you, and I'm grateful. I'm humbled, actually, to, to be here tonight. Today is EMS Week proclamation. So with that being said, you know, I've had people tell me and call me after this event at the Apollo, after this tornado, and they told me, you know, Mayor, you were really lucky, and you were fortunate. And they pointed out that, well, you know, our, the Apollo was a block across the bridge from our station, Station One. And while that's true, there's no question about it. Without the first responders that we had, both police and all of our fire, it would have been so much worse. And so I think we sometimes take for granted that we have, you know, we have public safety. It doesn't just take care of itself. It, it doesn't just occur. It happens because we have individuals that are committed, and we have individuals that train with that commitment. They train, and they make sure that whenever it is, and I've always said this, you never know when you're going to need to pick up the phone and dial 911, or you're going to have a catastrophic, catastrophic event in your community, in your community. But I will tell you that we have individuals here that can answer the call, and I think they prove that. Without them, it would have been certainly a much more different outcome. So I also want to recognize Dr. Matt Smetana. Dr. Smetana, thank you. I know I did chat with you a little bit the night up at Station One that evening, and I want to thank you for what you do and for coming out as well. We had some individuals that certainly were serious, and without a doubt, you made a big difference with that, so, thank you. And Lifeline Paramedic Lauren Schultz as well. Thank you, Lauren, and nice to have you here at the city. One of the things, before I read this, one of the things that I think goes without saying is, or goes lost a little bit, is that, you know, Chief Woody, he was, he was at the site early. He motivated me to get on my crutches and come down there, and I thank you for that, Chief, because you gave me a heads up, and I know everybody was very busy down there. But it was quite, quite an event, and I want to thank you for pitching in your department, police department. Sometimes, I've said this before, the police, I think, have taken a terrible rap, and it's been very disheartening, very, to me, very disgusting, sometimes how they're treated. And I think we see now that, you know, why they're so valuable. So please convey to your troops, the ones that aren't here, I see some of them in the back here, but my thanks for that, and thank you so much. But that evening, you know, I, when I, when I went down there, I had, was, I was wondering, where's, where's Chief Shadle? Where's Chief Shadle? Well, Chief Shadle was in, he was in the thick of it. And I had seen Chief Shadle on several occasions, running by, and then running back by, and running by, and running back by. And I realized that Chief Shadle, you know, he was in command. Certainly, he had his command staff, but he was definitely in command, and I can't thank him enough, and I, you know, I'm honored that I was fortunate enough to, to hire Chief Shadle to come here, because we had lost Chief here, and I was wondering, how are we going to fill those shoes? And you want to make sure you choose the, make the right choice. And believe you me, that was the right choice. And I had no doubt at the time with Chief Shadle, and I have no doubt now, and I think he's awful humble, but this community owes Chief Shadle an awful lot for command of this incident, of, of this tragedy, and making sure that we had the best outcome. It wasn't perfect. We did have Mr. Livingston lose his life. It wasn't perfect, but it could have been so much worse. So I do want to commend Chief Shadle, I do want to commend you, and thank you. So with that being said, the proclamation for Emergency Medical Services Week reads as follows. Whereas, emergency medical services are a vital public service, and whereas, our community is blessed with skilled and dedicated EMTs who respond at a moment's notice, meet us where we are at, and perform lifesaving measures to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas, access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas, the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas, the members of emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continuing education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas, it is, it is appropriate to recognize the value and the accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, I, Clinton Morris, Mayor of the City of Belvidere, Illinois, do hereby proclaim the week of May 21st through the 27th, 2023, as Emergency Medical Services Week. In witness whereof, I have hereunto set my hand and cause a seal of Belvidere to be affixed on this 22nd day of May 2023. So again, I want to give this to Chief Shadle, on behalf of not only myself, the city council, and the citizens of Belvidere. And I want to thank all of you for being here.
I'll just close with, we're extremely blessed in Belvidere and Boone County to have such high-quality EMS providers, both firefighters and ambulance personnel that have made it their life's work to serve others.
Okay. We have one other item on the agenda, 5C. I think we negotiated around that. So 5C is a solid waste collection. I had mentioned to the council at one point, we've seen our disposal services, we've seen them, the cost of them rise dramatically. I think in the last two or three years, they've doubled. I, I do receive calls about that. I don't know if the rest of you do or not, but I also know that I pay them. I pay that same bill that you pay, and that our residents pay. So with that being said, we have five providers. Three provide residential, and I think two provide commercial hauling for the city. And I think it would be, you know, I had said before, I was, when I ran for this office, I had said that was one of the things that, to me, made sense, at least, let's take a look at this, because not only of the, of the high cost to the residents, and it's not often that we can find an alternative that may save them money out of their monthly bills or, in this place, case, I guess, quarterly bills. But I thought it was something that we should at least take a look at. So I told the council I was going to bring back some information a while back, but I also think maybe I don't want to get the cart in front of the horse. I don't want to do anything that the council isn't comfortable with or, or don't think that we should do. So I do think that it's at least a wise idea to look at it, not to mention the cost. But I will say that we have fire, or we have disposal trucks going over our same streets. You know, they pick up at my house and they go to my neighbor's house, somebody else, and you have another truck on our street. Now, the question to me is whether or not there's a cost savings. I think some people, myself included, believe that the more competition you have, you know, perhaps that holds the prices down, and it's a competing force. I think we see evidence of that in a lot of things that we do. But we also see evidence of lower prices when you shop by, by volume, when you have more individuals that are making purchases or purchasing. And I think that's where, I guess I don't have that information, and I would ask the council if they would support going forward to be able to go out to some of these providers for bid. However it works out, however it comes back, that'll be a decision that we'll, we'll decide in the future. But I wanted to give you a little bit of a backdrop as to what I thought about that. Alderman Snow?
So I get your point, and I get the possibility of potential savings by having a single contractor, but when I've mentioned this to other people, first thing they say is, absolutely not. They think the competition keeps the prices down. The other thing they have an issue with is the service of... The other thing they have an issue with is the service of the providers. Everybody has a reason they change. Because originally, back in the old days, it was generically speaking, Belvidere disposal that was the primary. And then others came in, and people had attitudes about Belvidere disposal. So they moved over to the other companies and vice versa. Some of those, they don't like the other companies. So you wind up with that issue. The other is, like for me, I don't make enough garbage to justify having those big, huge cans. And some of them are going to be forced to have to have the big, huge cans that they don't necessarily want. And the other thing is, I get the point about the extra trucks. But to be quite frank, if you have, the more axles you have, the less weight is coming down on any particular spot in the street. So you have lighter trucks running around town at any given time that may or may not be wearing. I don't know if that's a real thing. But at the end of the day, you've got heavier trucks running around town. Now instead, you've got two trucks running around with half the weight. Just tossing that out there, or a third of the weight, depending on their volume. So I'm not a big fan of it. The other thing is, we're already on the hook for multiple landfills that the city was associated with by being associated with collection. Right now, it's independent. We don't have any jurisdiction other than to make sure that people don't collect rubbish on their property. So you start contracting, do we wind up in the pitfall? And maybe the attorney can throw in on that. I see that opening a bigger can of worms long-term down the road with stuff. Because, hey, something got put in the landfill. The city contracted it. They're the only ones that could have put it in there. It was their people, yada, yada, yada. Just tossing that out there. Not a big fan of doing it. I get the point. You'd have to have significant savings in order to justify it, in my opinion.
And Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, Mayor. So I really like my garbage company and my garbage man. And, you know, my next-door neighbor, which happens to be my son, daughter-in-law, have a different one. And I've said, you know, you need to switch to my guy. He's great. And they're like, no, we like our guy. So, you know, I might pay a little more for mine than they do. But, you know, they only get recycle picked up every other week. I get my recycle picked up every week. And if I was forced to switch to their guy, I would not be a happy camper. And I don't think if they were forced to mine, they would be either.
Alderman Porter?
Yeah, just a couple of comments here. Alderman Snow pretty much covered everything that I was going to say too. I kind of feel the same way. We have to remember that the former mayor also wanted to do this. And if my memory is correct, it never made it even to the council because when it was first brought up, there was a lot of negative comments, but from the public. One thing, it is going to increase the workload for the city employees or the city person who is answering the phone. Because I do know from talking to what's happening in Papa Grove that, you know, if they don't get satisfaction from calling the actual garbage company, they call and complain to city council. And they're fielding calls for multiple complaints. Because I know I talked to somebody about this. And also, my recommendation would be to put it on a public referendum to see, you know, what the public thinks about it.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else?
The only thing I will say is that, you know, I have had individuals call me. And I've gotten submissions from residents that said, you know, my bill has gone up exponentially, which I know it has. I also think that, you know, if we have guidelines as to what service they will provide, you know, that's why we go out for bid on certain projects in the city. We give them a parameter. We give them a list, a scope of work. And they bid on the scope of work, just like everybody else. I also, you know, I don't know what the answer is to this. But I know that until, if nobody ever goes forward and finds out, then I guess we will never know if there's any, if there's any cost savings to a proposal like that. But as always, it's certainly a council decision to make. I do, I have often thought that, is it something that we might be able to actually affect individuals, their pocketbook? When we talk about with savings, when we talk about some of the potential exposure or liability? I know other communities do do it, and they do provide that. And they do it at a cost savings, I would assume, or they probably wouldn't do it. But whether or not, you know, it's so preliminary, whether or not there would be any, what language would be able to protect the city from any exposure? That would have to be something that would definitely be placed into the, you know, the scope of work. So my own personal opinion is, you know, I don't really care. I don't know my garbage man. I mean, I have known him in the past. They have changed. And as they change, the service that I pay for is also the service that I get. And that would be something that would be defined as we go forward. I don't, I guess, I look at it as, what do I pay to get the service that I have now, that I want, that I'm used to? And is there a way that we can provide it more efficiently cost-wise? So I don't know what those answers are. My thought is to go ahead and ask them. And we don't have to go any further than that if we get answers that we don't like. But it's certainly a council decision. So Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you, again. So the city contracts with an electric provider. Add a savings to the residents, but it's optional.
Actually, it's not add a savings to the residents really. Anymore, our aggregate, electric aggregation agreement just meets, they match ComEd's pricing. So whatever kilowatt, whatever kilowatt hour. It was that way, and it's all changed. But whatever kilowatt hour price that ComEd's charged, they match that. Where they do provide a benefit for the residents is that the residents never see on their bill, ComEd still does the billing for the aggregate, for the middle party, the middle man, you will say. But they also provide to the city $100,000 a year that the city's able to use for a benefit for the taxpayers. So, but it used to be that way, but it's not anymore.
Okay, so that's optional, right? You can opt in on that, or you can, you don't have to use it. So would this be, this would be the same thing? We're not going to be trying to force people to use one particular garbage company, right? I mean, it would be optional. I could stick with my guy, even though I want to pay more?
Well, I would think that that would probably defeat, you know, the question is whether or not you would have a savings based upon, you know, one-stop shop. Whether or not everybody would provide everybody a savings. And so with aggregation, they're automatically signed up for it, and they would have to opt out for a savings. And prior to having, matching the rates, I had never heard of anybody that had called the city and said, I want to pay more for the electric service that I'm receiving. So I'd never heard that prior to this last contract with MC Squared. So I guess, you know, how do we look at it? Do we want to provide maybe a better option for them? And do we ask if it in fact is a better option? If it isn't a better option, then I would agree. But I would say in answer to your question, whenever you have a volume in, you know, buying power, purchasing power, utilization of services, what have you, you have a potential for savings? Perhaps, perhaps. Anything else, Alderwoman Freeman?
Well, you know, it's just that people, you get what you pay for, in my view. So I pay a little more because I like the service that I get from my provider. So if I were to be forced to switch to somebody else and I wasn't getting the same service, even though it might save me money that I'm willing to pay anyway, who am I going to call?
What if it was the same service and you were saving money?
If it was the same service, I'd be okay. But, you know, my neighbor probably might not.
I don't know. They, you know, the calls that I get are people want to know how they can reduce their costs, you know, with inflation being what it is. We see it, everything we buy, everything we, we see it at the gas pump. We're especially going to see it around the holiday. We see it at the grocery store. We see it when we go out to eat at a restaurant, if we do. We see it in everything we purchase at the stores. If this is an opportunity that may lighten the load, that's all I'm saying. I'm not saying, I'm not advocating for any one company, not by any means. I'm just advocating if this might be prudent on their behalf. And if it's not, it's not. Alderman Flurry, and then Alderman Porter.
Thank you. So there were some good concerns brought up tonight that I hadn't thought of before. But I still think, you know, obviously, they can go deeper with this if we're liable for land waste and stuff like that. But I think at this point, does this cost anything to get quotes? I mean, is it putting a burden on the staff to receive these quotes?
No.
Because I think at this point, you know, I think it can also kind of put this to rest. If, you know, we go out and we get these bids, and it's only going to save the citizen $10 a month, well, then I would think most people are like, no, thanks. I like my freedom to choose who I have. But, you know, if it's going to cut the cost in half or more than that, maybe people might be like, well, I did like my guy, but I don't like him 50% more, you know? So then, I think at that point, then we can dig into deeper questions about, what about landfills, and what's liable and things like that. But I think the initial thing, if we're just getting quotes, I think it's at least good to hear. And then again, if it's only a $10 savings a month, I think most people are like, no, thanks. Then we can kind of put this to bed. But I think it's at least worth checking into. And then if there's no good savings, then we can put it to rest.
Okay, thank you. Alderman Porter, did you have anything else to add?
Well, that was pretty much it. I think it can't hurt to get the quotes. And also, but we want to see maybe how long they would be willing to freeze the rates. Because, you know, if somebody has a monopoly on something, they might tend to raise the rates fairly quickly. So we might want to, you know, include that and get in the quotes.
Thank you. Alderman Snow?
And so when you think about this, and I'm doing this, is this something that would be added on to the property tax bill? Or billed monthly through, no offense to the water, billing, the water department? Since everybody that's got a water bill would wind up in that same boat, I would assume, generically speaking. What was the intent, if you had any?
Oh, you know, I've got my own answer to that. But the city attorney might have an answer as well.
So when the mayor first brought this up to me, my first reaction was, no. And I said a little bit flippantly, but he'll actually verify I said that. We are one of, I didn't, I did a quick, I know me and scientific study of area communities and how they handle their waste pickup. We're one of only two that, maybe it was three, that allowed pretty much a free market, where they just license people to come in and people contract directly with their waste haulers. We do, as I mentioned, regulations or things on there. In our code, we do already regulate how they operate and when they can operate. We have limits on the time of day they can be operational. We require yard waste pickup. We require recycled pickup. We require bulky waste pickup, things like that. So they do have some core functions that they all must meet. The city in the past has chosen not to engage in licensing, but going to a single-source collection out of an abundance of caution. Because under circle liability, as Alderman Snow was leading to, there's liability for what's called a ranger liability, where you set up a relationship between the garbage pickup company and the property owner, and they take it to a landfill. The city could find itself on the hook for part of a circle liability with landfill in the future. Now, the reality is, most cities in the United States do it that way. And the reality is, the likelihood of that liability is fairly small. And you can insure for it, and you can have the garbage company indemnify you for it, and get their insurance company indemnify you for it. So the liability is always there, though. And if it does hit it, it's expensive, as we found out with our two landfills. But that's been one of the reasons we have not done in the past, coupled with the idea of a free-market economy and letting them bid against each other with the residents. When I looked at the various communities that provided the service as opposed to simply licensing haulers like we do, there was a split between them. Some of the cities, they're the ones responsible for the billing. They're the ones that are responsible for collecting from the resident. And they simply pay the garbage company a monthly or quarterly big check, kind of like what we're doing for the ambulance services, frankly. It would look a lot like that. And if you do that, it makes sense to have the billing go through water bills or something along those lines. There were a couple of cities that did that, one being Rockford. The newer trend seems to be, you go to bid, you establish almost like a franchise with one garbage company. I believe it was Cherry Valley did this and a couple of the other ones. And the garbage company, whoever the successful bidder is, is responsible for all the billing. And if they don't collect, they eat it. The city doesn't eat it. But they're responsible for setting up the bills, collecting the bills, and everything else. And all we do is to simply award the contract at the front end for whatever the duration of the contract is. So, you know, obviously, from a staff perspective, my point is easier to say, it's your problem. Kind of like we're outsourcing the billing on the ambulance, so we don't have to deal with it too much. Could we do it in-house? Yes, but that would, of course, create more work for staff.
I think he covered everything I was going to say on that. So thank you. City Attorney, appreciate that. Alderwoman Freeman?
Thank you. So, so you basically would be taking away choice, right? Like, if my garbage man, if they replace my guy with a different guy, and I'm not liking the way he's doing it, I have the freedom to call them and complain. And if they don't rectify it, I can switch to my neighbor's company. And like, that's capitalism, right? That's freedom of choice. I mean, I don't tell people, we can't tell people, you have to shop at Walmart as opposed to Pacemaker because their prices are cheaper and it's going to save you money. You know, like, who are we to tell people what they can and can't afford as far as what they want to pay? It's freedom.
Well, as I'd said before, I think, you know, if we have the service, I mean, it's not rocket science. It's not, we're not putting a man on the moon. We're picking up refuse in the city. And there's only one way to do that, and that is the right way to do it. I mean, any company that doesn't pick it up now, you know, and believe me, I've had calls about people not tarping their vehicles and what have you. And it is. But there are also parameters that you can lay out that would ensure that they provide whatever level of service that you expect. And I think we're all reasonable people. I think we expect, you know, we understand what it is. If we set garbage or refuse out, and we expect that it's going to be picked up, are we out there to greet the garbage man? I guess I have done that before, if I wanted to tip him. And I have done that. But I could do that with somebody else that's doing a good job and actually afford to tip him, maybe a little bit, if I'm saving money on the bill. I'm not saying, you know, and the other thing is, I guess when you, we buy fuel, for instance. We buy fuel in the city. We spend an inordinate amount of money, extraordinary amount of money. As you guys, as the council knows, we spend money on fuel. And, you know, should we, you know, I want, I may want this fuel, and Brent may want this fuel, and Danny may want a certain fuel company. But inevitably, it doesn't matter. It's fuel. It's the same fuel that makes the vehicles run, and we're saving money for the taxpayers. I guess, you know, that's what I look at it. There isn't very many different ways that we're able to have an impact on if we can actually provide a service that's good, quality service, and we can provide it at a savings to our residents. I mean, I don't know. I don't know if we can do that, but I know other communities do. And all I'm saying is, and no, I don't consider it un-American. I mean, you know, I mean, I just consider it that the city's utilizing their purchasing power on behalf of the residents. power on behalf of the residents, and that's how I look at it. But no, I, I don't think it's un-American at all. I think it, I'm all for capitalism as well, and that's why they're all going to have a chance to bid on it. Alderwoman Frank?
Yeah, I had a problem for a constituent across the street on Florence, right next to 7-Eleven. And for, I think, if I looked at my call log, it was like three months that she was having problems, and they weren't picking up. And the garbage man, you know, she'd call me and I would call them, and they would give me some kind of an excuse, like they couldn't get onto it because they were doing construction on, on Logan, and then they gave them another excuse that they couldn't get in there because the wires were too low. So I had talked to Mr. Anderson about it, and he said, well, I'll drive by, he drove by, and he said, I don't see a problem. So this went on for three months, and then I called you, and then you had to call, and it was taken care of, because they weren't listening to me, even though I was the alderman. I had to call you, who had more power than I did, to get this resolved. But a little street, maybe six houses, and the guy refused to go down the street to get their garbage. So there, there, some people are having problems, and, you know, if we can alleviate that, but like Mr. Flurry said, why don't we put this to rest and get some quotes? It's you doing the work, and just bring it to us and we'll review it.
Okay, thank you. Oh, and by the way, that was my brother-in-law, that's why I had the clout. No, no, it wasn't, it wasn't, it wasn't. That was a joke. No, no, no. Anyhow, yeah, whatever. So, no, you're right, but it is unfortunate, you know, that, you know, I shouldn't have to, I shouldn't have to make that call. However, you know, if the city has a contract, then we, we expect a certain, I can certainly make that call. I probably had no authority to make that call, other than the fact that I am the mayor, but, you know, if we have a contract or franchise agreement, certainly that might put us in a different position. But as I, as I had said, I, I don't know how this is going to turn out. I'm not asking us to reinvent the wheel, I'm asking just for us, whether or not people want to go forward. If we don't, we don't. But it's your call, so.
Hey, Mayor, regardless of how this goes forward, you raised the question about the complaint. We do get complaints once upon the clerk's office. Usually surrounds a garbage company refusing to pick up yard waste is the usual one, because a few of the, the licensees, because we do license them, remember, they pay a license fee every year to come into the city and operate. Their billing staff has marked Boone County no yard waste, and they forget Belvedere's in Boone County. And usually it takes one nasty letter from me saying we're revoking your license, and we get an apology letter, and they go out there and start picking things up right away. So if you have that problem, give Sarah's office a call, give me a call directly, and we'll take care of it.
Alderman Snow?
So how does this affect the, and there's a lot of them, residents that have the mini dumpsters as opposed to just the regular trash cans that get picked up? How does that affect?
Well, like I said, I'm not, I don't have all the answers, Alderman Snow, yet. You know, I think it's kind of learn as you go or feel as you go, get the feel for it. I don't have all those answers yet. I don't even know if we're going to go there. So as we go forward, we'll figure it out. Nothing's, as I said, it's not, we're not putting a man on the moon here. We're just talking about if we're going to be able to pick up service afford, more affordably for the residents. If not, we won't do it. Anybody else? All right. So, excuse me, but where are we at?
There's no motion.
There's no motion, okay. So I had asked for a motion to proceed. If the council wants me to proceed, wants us to proceed, bring something back, I would need a motion and a second to do that. Motion by Alderman Porter, second by Alderman McGee. I think we've probably played this one out. Anybody else? All right. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Motion passed, and I think that's all we have on the agenda. Can I get a motion to adjourn, please? Oh, before we do that, before we do that, I do want to thank the council. I was, I was also remiss a little bit. There were, there were aldermen that were down at, at the Apollo event. Alderman Burden was down there, and I had a real lengthy conversation, he was down there about, probably as long as I was. He was down there a lot. And I think Alderwoman Mohal was down there as well, and if there's anybody, I don't know if anybody else was down there, if I missed them, I just didn't see them, but I do want to recognize you for being down there. This is, I mean, you guys had a genuine concern for the community and wanted to see where we were at as quickly as we were. You had a major concern, just like I did and just like all of us had. So thank you, I appreciate it. And with that being said, could I get a motion to adjourn? I got the motion, do I? Motion by Alderman Albertini, second by Alderman McGee, thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Anybody want to stay? All right, thank you. For the record, we adjourned at 7:46 PM. Thank you, everybody.